Allegiance. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have non-citizens comment on agenda-related items.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mark Miller, 400 River Street, representing the chamber and the DDA. Just want to speak in favor of the Good Stuff LLC tasting room. We've been working with Randy Betts on this. It has gone through the DDA. It was a unanimous vote at the DDA. So I think this will be a great addition to downtown. I just want to make one other point. As this is moving forward, this is utilizing a River Walk facing frontage, which I think is really exciting for utilizing all of the spaces that we have downtown and that it will be something that I'm sure the residents and tourists alike will greatly appreciate, having that view and being able to appreciate that. So just speak in favor of the project and ask for your consideration.
Thank you. Else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consideration of Manistee County Mutual Aid Agreement. The Manistee County Mutual Aid Agreement is renewed every three years. There has been no changes from the previous agreement that was signed in 2019. At this time, council could take action to approve the Manistee County Mutual Aid Agreement authorized by the mayor and clerk to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion?
I thought it said in here that it was only for a year. Did I read that? Did I read that one? It looks like it's three years here, but in the paperwork, I thought it said something about a year. Am I wrong?
So the mutual aid agreement, it's a three-year agreement. It's revised every three years where we go through it. And so it's a three-year agreement.
But it's approved every year or?
Right. Right. It's a mandatory recheck of it every three years.
What's in the agreement?
In the agreement? Basically, it's a... So I do have a PowerPoint that has...
You'll pull it up.
This is what I would be considered a boilerplate agreement between all of fire departments within the county that describe that we will respond if available and help another county fire department when it is needed if we are available. And we will do this without charging the other county fire department. So, and just, I came together with a few slides here just to kind of recap and give you guys a closer look at the mutual aid that is given and the mutual aid that is received for this current year so far.
Press it down.
First time. All right. So currently, right now, our call volume is at 1,009 calls for the current year. This was as of October 1st. So call volume has been increasing for the past five years. This is as far back as I could track accurately. If we have an October, November, and December that were similar to last year, our call volume will be over 1,300 calls. And that will be the most calls that our fire department has ever responded to in its history. So call volume is increasing. All right. So the location, now, this is the incident location. This is where our fire department is responding to the majority of the time. So of our 1,009 calls that we've had so far this year, 90% of our calls have been located within the city limits. And 10% of the calls that our fire department has responded to was outside of the city, which would be outside of the city limits. All right. So mutual aid. So far this current year, mutual aid was initiated 135 times this year. So our fire department has made 135 mutual aid responses. So mutual aid is used a lot. It does count for a significant part of our call volume as the fire department. Now, it's broken up into two different categories, aid given and aid received. Aid received is when another agency comes into our city and helps our fire department. That's happened 39 times so far this year of where a different fire department or MMR, medical ambulance, would come in and help out our residents 39 times. Now, 96 times, our fire department has responded to the outside county, helping the departments outside of the county. Or outside of the city, I'm sorry. So where are the majority of these incidents happening that our fire department responds to? So this is what our fire department is responding to. So out of our 1,009 calls that we've made out of October, 989 of those calls are within that blue circle. So they're very close to within the city limits. We have made some responses that are well with outside of the city. Those calls right there, that is 20 calls and that we have made outside of that blue circle in there. So that represents 2% of our calls are, I would say, a considerable distance away from the city limits. So in a summary of what we have with mutual aid is our call volume is increasing and we must plan for the increasing call volume. Nine out of 10 calls our fire department responds to are within the city. And mutual aid is part of 13% of our fire department's call volume. So mutual aid is a significant portion. We do use mutual aid frequently. However, 98% of our fire department's responses are located within the city or near the city limits. So that was that last map. And 2% of our call volume would be located, what I would consider a significant distance away from the city. That's what I got.
Would you do your annual report? Would you clarify, police, or I'm sorry, fire response versus EMS response?
I have it separated.
Of those numbers, how many of those were fire versus under ambulance?
Yes. Yeah, we can break down those.
Your annual report, would you break that up, please?
Sure. Absolutely.
And 2%, when you're outside the city, way out in Arcadia, Wellston, who is here to respond if we have a bad accident?
So anytime our fire department, so our 1,009 calls that we've responded to so far this year, we have two firefighters on duty. So any response that they make, we don't have anybody left at the station. So every call that we make, our entire fire department responds. There's me left, but we have two firefighters that are on duty each day.
So at night, if something happens, you have nobody to take away out?
It's really any call that we make, any response that we make, our 1,009 calls that we make, that is using up all of our firefighters.
And that's why I disagree with going out to Arcadia and Wellston.
Backup then, you do all hands if you have a second call, correct?
Correct. So when the guys do...
You don't just leave it empty if another call, or you don't just say we don't have anybody. You do all hands.
Right. So right now, when the fire department, when they get responded out, when we have a fire, so when there's a fire within the city limits, we have what is called an all-hands page. All right? So there's a fire within the city. Our firefighters automatically call for an all-hands page, which means the other firefighters that we have employed with the city respond into the city and come in, and they backfill the station when they're available. All right? Outside of the city, the firefighters look at the distance away. So when it is those 2% of calls that are a significant distance away, they do get on the radio and do an all-hands page where they would backfill and bring more people into the city.
And how often, if ever, does nobody show up on all hands? Are you always have all hands or is there a small percentage where someone doesn't show up?
All hands, so in my experience that I've been here so far this year, we've had, we've always had at least one person come in and respond. And then along with me, we would have two additional people. But it is all across the board on how many times we can get the people in in the station in a time, quickly in that. So it is, coming from the all-hands and responding into the city, is, it is not guaranteed. It is not automatic. It, as people are available, as they receive it. So there is some risk involved. I mean, there is risk with that, involved with doing that. So nationally, when I'm looking at mutual aid, all right? So since, I've been doing a lot of studying on mutual aid recently. So it's from 1980 to the current year, mutual aid across fire departments within the United States has increased by over fivefold. All right? So it's used five times more likely than it has in the 80s. I don't think you're going to find any fire departments around here that would probably say they're flush with staffing, especially in the volunteer ranks. And that, the volunteer ranks, the numbers in the study that I've been doing is basically, so from this past year, the study was done in 2020. The results came out in 2022. Volunteer staffing, volunteer firefighters have decreased by 7% in the nation. It's now currently at its lowest amount of volunteer firefighters ever recorded. All right? So our neighbors, who we rely on for mutual aid and help, are struggling recruiting people. It's at an all-time low for volunteers.
I know they've had trouble when they page out. They have a hard time getting a couple people to come in.
It's, you know, well, we see the signs and the billboards located where they're actively recruiting, but there is a shortage of volunteer firefighters. On the other hand, since then, full-time fire departments have increased by 2%. So you can see where, you know, there is some reshuffling of the deck going on.
Can you tell?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Can you tell us what kind of calls they were, the way out there?
And the majority of those calls were medical calls that I seen. I can break that down specifically and tell you what it was. But they, going by just memory or off the top of my head, 90% of our calls that our fire department responds to are medical calls. We respond to 90%. And this is along the lines of the national average. 4% of the calls that we respond to are fire calls. I am suggesting that those numbers are probably accurate with those further out. 90% of those are medical, and then 4% would be the fire or a different type of call.
I know I was listening to the scanners one day, and the kid fell down and broke his arm. And they wanted the ambulance to come way out there. They could have put him in the car just as quick.
So certainly, when we add EMS to the fire service workload, it changes that whole dynamic on mutual aid. Because we're going out much more with the ambulance than we ever did when we only had a fire truck. And we knew that, and we did that. The other equation is, when you put your two guys in service and you call somebody, and only one guy comes in, and that's a paramedic, you can call for an EMT from fire or township or someplace else to back that EMT up and run that rig with an ambulance with the EMT and a paramedic. Is that still something you guys do or no?
We do have options to fill apparatus. A lot of it is, is me within the city, is I'm able to come in quickly and help out.
Are you an EMT?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. But, so we do bring in people. We are looking at staffing models and how can we keep up with the times? Because like we said, our call volume is increasing. All right? And, you know, and we need to plan ahead for the future. And with talking with the city manager, we are, we are planning. We're looking at the numbers. One of my main goals is here is really collecting a lot of data. And I want to make sure that I'm presenting really good information with you. And then we're also looking at the national trends and really taking what's happening within the state at the national level and state level. There is a shortage of paramedics in Michigan. You know, there's a clear shortage in that. We do an excellent job. We have a great reputation of providing EMS within our community. So we really set a high standard. And we do a great job providing EMS and transport services and that. But, you know, it's hard to get the people in that and then staffing at all.
What happened with the two young guys that you just hired?
It was their second day today, and they did everything right. Very happy. They have the right attitude. I'm really encouraged and excited to have them aboard.
Our police officers are cross-trained too, right?
We do have two police officers now that are cross-trained as firefighters in that. And then, so I, that is a model. Then they do come to calls when they are on duty.
So they could backfill the fire department if necessary, right?
So I don't know enough about that with the police department on how I could, you know, what his staffing levels are and that to where I could essentially take one of his people. I'm not familiar with that.
The problem is the police department's law on staffing, though.
Yeah, I don't have a good...
So I guess I see both sides of it. But I guess I'm wondering, just kind of thinking ahead for the budget for like next year and what council is going to be asked to consider. I mean, at the county summit, like, everybody's in the same boat as far as staffing. I mean, it's not just a city issue. We're seeing it with fire, police, EMT, all of that. I mean, even the hospitals experiencing staffing issues. I guess I'm wondering, is that something we can look into to see how we might be able to recruit some people? I mean, some areas, and I know that was discussed about too, is offering incentives and trying to get people to retain talent and having them sign an agreement. Like, if we pay for this, we'll agree to three-year service or something like that. It might be a good way to encourage some people to come to the area.
So planning for the future is what I see as one of my core responsibilities. And with looking at this and setting up, setting up the data that we're collecting and looking at everything, yes, that's absolutely one of my responsibilities to make sure that we're planning for the future. Because the future of the fire service and EMS is changing. And for us to roll with the times is...
Well, and I'm just thinking from like a school aspect. I mean, oftentimes, you hear about college and you hear about workforce. But there wasn't necessarily, like, when I was in school and even working in the school system, a lot of students don't necessarily understand what does it take to go work as an EMT or what does it take to go work as a firefighter? I mean, there's some really good opportunities there for students that I don't think they know about. So even if we looked at the education aspect of that for kids in our community, we might be able to retain some talent that way.
Yeah, local talent and job fairs and those types of things. I have been told of those things. And looking at different, even props and programs that we can put on the principal here in Manistee, he actually spoke to me about that the other day.
Perfect. Thanks.
What kind of training do your firefighters go through? I'm familiar with firefighter one and firefighter two. You probably don't really need to do those if you've got paramedics already on duty. Or do they need one and two?
They need firefighters one and two because, as we said, really with our fire department, everybody needs to be able to do everything when it comes down to it. So firefighter one and two essentially allows a firefighter to dawn an SCBA and make an interior fire attack. You know, that's our goal when we get in, is we get notified quickly. We respond and see that we make an interior fire attack. Without the firefighter two certificate, you are not able to make an interior fire attack. So we want to make sure all of our firefighters have that, which they all do. Now, as far as an ambulance and providing the ambulance service and the paramedic level things, that would be advanced life support. And paramedics are able to do things like, they would set up the EKG and read that. They could start an IV, provide drugs, different innovation tactics to provide respirations for that. And that's a considerable amount of schooling that it takes in order to receive that. It takes about two years for a person to get a full-fledged paramedic with all the clinical hours and those types of things that we need. So it is, it, it's a high level of licensure, but the bang you get for it out of running an ambulance is, it's the standard, the current standard.
Does it make any sense that going forward into the future, which could be a few years down the road, of course, but would it make any sense to look at having a small volunteer firefighters, volunteer firefighters here in the city? Because you could train, I'm sure somebody can teach fire, you know, firefighting one and two.
So as I'm going to have to dive deeper into volunteer firefighting and how that comes, the average right now is that people, the plain old finding volunteers and getting volunteers is on the decline. Okay? There are less and less people volunteering. That's why their numbers are shrinking. And if you look at the current numbers and the age of volunteer firefighters, they're essentially aging out. There's very few young people volunteering for probably a various, for many reasons, I would assume, in that. So we would want to consider that as, you know, is that talent pool going to be there to pull from in that? But I'm going to, we're going to explore all options and we're going to look at it. We're not going to exclude anything. But just looking at it over the surface, just getting volunteered, volunteer departments are having a hard time getting volunteers.
Actually, they're prohibited in your department as well? I don't believe your contract allows volunteers. You can allow, you have some paid, part-time guys. I don't believe you're allowed to put volunteers on the Manistee fire department by contract.
I don't know that part of the contract for sure.
I believe that's...
I'd have to relook at it. Thank you.
Maybe it could be changed.
Excuse my ignorance here, but what, I know you're saying a lot of these are, you know, like ambulance kind of things.
Yes.
Does our hospital send out an ambulance when there's something going on? Or is there any coordination there between you guys in that?
So the paramedic right now, or the MMR would be the ambulance company that does Manistee County. And that, we provide ambulance service from within the city. So they are part of our mutual aid partners. They are part of this mutual aid agreement. So they do come in. When you saw that number, was it 39 times the fire department come? 90% of that was MMR coming to help us and respond to our ambulance calls. And that, also keep in mind is if we were to run, say, like a car accident or something like that, we would be busy running the car accident and they would respond in for the patient care. As an example.
How many ambulances are they running out of?
They range from one to three for the county.
All three of them are gone when you guys get called out?
Correct.
Are they on the wrong distance trips again?
And that. I don't know what their responses are.
Do you find out, Bill? Or we'd have to know what the amount that they're going out with.
And this is a very basic agreement where if we do get called out, and I think we can talk about the equity of that, but they will backfill for us when we have a call here too. So there are times too when we have three, maybe four calls, and everyone comes. So it's a good way to plan for events. And there's times when it's feast or famine with these things. So this is a very basic level. But there are some trends we're looking at. And you're right, if we're getting called out a lot because their ambulances are going up to Traverse City, that's something we need to address with them. But that would be separate from this. This is the basic level we need, but we're looking into those things.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Sorry. Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution, Good Stuff LLC, 308 River Street, on-premises tasting room. Good Stuff LLC is proposing to open a small distillery located at 308 River Street and is requesting a resolution from city council to support their application to the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Liquor Control Commission. This application is for an on-premises tasting room permit. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution supporting the request from Good Stuff LLC for an on-premises tasting room permit. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have a lot of questions on how a tasting room works. I don't know what the occupancy is. I don't know if everybody gets carded when they come in. If you could just walk us through that a little bit, that would be helpful.
Well, many things aren't settled yet. For the occupancy, that determined, it will not be like a restaurant-type situation where there's lots of tables. So customers should come in, have a tasting, a cocktail, wander around, look at the merchandise. And it's not something where you would stay a long time, so...
Can I interrupt and ask who you are first?
Yes. My name is Randy Betts.
Okay. I thought so. I just didn't want to assume. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mary.
But anyway, so that will have to be determined. You know, I have a lot to do yet. Like, this is the very first step to get local approval. There's so much licensing to do with the federal and state level. And they require this first. So they want to know that everybody locally is okay with it. And then I can go ahead with the licensing. But then an architect will be employed to address many things. You know, occupancy, fire code, everything. So...
Anybody else?
So I just had a quick question. So you mentioned that they might, customer might come in, sample a drink, look at your merchandise. So would they have to stay on the premises with your drink? Or would that be considered part of the social district where they could go out?
Well, I believe it's in the works right now to include that property in the social district. So I'm hoping that is an option.
Yeah, I was just thinking, when you said there might not be a lot of tables, I don't, do you know what I mean? Like, if we don't know occupancy and that, like, I don't know what that looks like. So there might not be enough room for everybody. So I was just thinking if people could go outside with their...
I hope that's the case.
Okay.
I mean, I'm hoping there's a lot of customers. But, you know, I wouldn't expect floods of customers all the time. But it would be very nice if, you know, that they could then move. And I don't know what all the rules are on the social district, but I will learn them, of course.
I really like the idea that it's going to be accessible from the Riverwalk side because I think we're missing opportunity there. So I'm here that...
It surprises me somewhat that it isn't more on the Riverside or, you know.
Yeah.
I'm excited about that. It's a beautiful location and...
It is.
Yeah.
You know, I just mentioned council passed a revocable license allowing that catwalk on, just to go around the building over at Hopkins' and... So this actually opened up the two spaces, I think, made it more accessible to get to in the backside of the river area.
Randy, being this is going to be just a tasting room. Is it going to be like when you go to the wine places up north, that they give you a small glass of wine?
Absolutely. Yep. It won't be a lot. You know, it'll be like a shot glass with a little...
Okay.
Yeah. And then the cocktails will be featuring the spirits that I'm making. So...
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Planning Commission, Tree Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Meryl and manager appointments require a motion second and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority of support. The following applications have been received. Planning Commission, three vacancies, terms ending 10/31/26. Purpose reviews, master plan, zoning, site plans, development issues, Meryl appointment. Roger Yoder, 225 Seventh Street. Pamela Weiner, 410 Pine Street. Mick Schamansky, three thirty-two Fifth Street. At this time, council could take action to make the appointments as noted. First appointment would be Roger Yoder, two twenty-five Seventh Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Second appointment, Pamela Weiner, four-ten Pine Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, third appointment, Mick Schamansky, three thirty-two Fifth Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Ms. Lizlasky from the Parks Commission.
Lizlasky, five thirty-seven Fourth Street, giving the annual report on the city parks. First, I want to recognize the people that are on the commission. The people are the key to, to any commission. Kelly Greavy, the first one on there. Kelly is instrumental in so many things and she just has the vision of making Manistee beautiful, cleaner, and better. Laney Ruska. Laney was instrumental in writing two grants which both of them were received. She was our liaison with the story hour in the parks with Angela at the Manistee Library. Karen Mao. Karen is our bylaw queen. She's, uh, our bylaws had not been updated since two thousand nine. She went over every word many, many times and I thank the council for approving them because we have tried to coordinate them with what the city ordinances were and Karen was instrumental in just following through on this. Karen also, uh, worked on the story hours in the parks, which we had three, and she was the one that instigated the Nassau stargazing, uh, parties at Fifth Avenue Beach. And the Art Drop, she and Karen Paltola wrote the clues. Karen Paltola came to us from Detroit City Parks. Karen worked twenty-five years with the Detroit City Parks and she is just like on fire and envisions all these things. And an example was at the last meeting, she, uh, someone, someone said, she, she heard from a friend that there's this program out there and that people do it across the nation. It's called Art Drop, where you have a scavenger hunt, look for clues in the park. And it was, uh, the same date that occurs all around the country. And it was like within three weeks. And Karen, the normal thing would have been, um, let's do this next year. Oh, no. Karen says, we can get this done. And sure enough, we had Art Drop in Manistee. Evan Greavy donated a piece of artwork that was the prize. There was clues given throughout Karen. Both Karens worked together on these clues. It was a well-received, kinda cool project that I hope we continue. Tim O'Connor, Tim was past chair, um, he's Mr. Enthusiasm for those who, of you who know him. He and Tim Ole, another past park chair, were instrumental along with Jeff McCula on the new disc golf course. And Tim, uh, Tom Ole was, uh, a professional disc golf player. He helped with the layout. Jeff McCula was, provided the DPW, who laid all the pads and did a good job at all of that. And Tim donated for the grand opening, the discs and the T-shirts, which amounted to over seven hundred dollars. John Veach is our newest member. John is like involved in everything on the parks. If there's a project, John is there. And he's also a detail person and he's putting together, we had that five-year master plan, which was good, which we paid for, but he's going into depth even greater on that. And so we appreciate what every person on here brings to the table. We wouldn't be anywhere without any of these people. Okay, here's our mission statement as stated in the bylaws. And as a commission, our goal is to build community bonds, promote healthy outdoor lifestyles, develop pride in our city parks, and to recommend steps to maintain, improve, protect, and preserve the parks for future generations. Parks and playgrounds are the heart and soul of our community and we believe every sentence in this. And in every event that we have, we try to, to promote this. Okay, the disc golf course is on Cherry Road. It's, uh, a great addition to the town. It's something that we should all be proud of that. It took years to get here, but it, it's very worthwhile. The DPW provided on the right, and that's kind of our hallmark of the thing, the, the basket is in there and you'll see how the baskets look on the left, but the, I think it was, was it Tanner Liston who did that? And it's, it's, uh, really neat. And if you haven't had the chance to walk through that, one thing about disc golf, which I didn't realize, they are different than like, say, golf or any other thing. You can walk through the park. They aren't like, oh, it's disc golf, get out of our way, get this. As long as you're, you know, respectful, they are a pretty neat group. It's our third disc golf in Manistee and they are all being used. We have one at Red Shamark Park, which I don't know if I've ever gone by there and not seen people using that one. And then the Armory Youth Project has one. Here's the new benches. We talked about once before at city council asking for approval. Those are the garbage cans that have made a difference. This is, the benches and the garbage cans will also be in Duffy Park and in Morton Park. The benches, as you can see, are pretty much maintenance-free. Here's some improvements to the Lions Pavilion. Again, Tanner Liston provided that and it's a really neat, that's a fire pit that's available for the public use down at the Lions Pavilion. There are these flower boxes that Karen Paltola was instrumental. They are self-watering. They were purchased locally. Uh, the flowers, they're on both sides of the entrance into the pavilion. We were going to seasonally decorate them, but, uh, this picture was just taken two days ago. They still look good. So we may put pumpkins in them, but for sure, we will have greens in them at Christmas time. Douglas First Street Beach, uh, the Mingur Grant provided money to improve Duffy, Morton's, and Douglas First Street Beach. We have added a pitching, uh, device to Sands Park, Morton's, and Douglas First Street Beach. These are, um, I think they were told to be prison-grade, uh, basketball backboards, that they're pretty much indestructible. But they are a beautiful addition because where that park is located, you can see right through them. And we have two such, uh, basketball, uh, basketball hoops and stands. We need, there's four, and one of them in the middle is the one that doesn't look so good, doesn't even have a hoop on it. So I'd like to see them all brought up to the standard of the ones on the side. The, uh, court was power washed and that was one of those projects going down the next day, one of the commissioners, one of the kids came up and said, could I shake your hand? Now, these are just kids down, they're bouncing balls. Fifteen-year-old kid said, could I shake your hand? Well, what for? Thank you for cleaning these courts. And you think nobody doesn't notice things like that. They truly do and they truly appreciate them. Uh, the DPW provided and made the benches, which were, um, kinda rotting away prior to that. This is one of the events that we had. This is a story hour in the park at Veterans Park. That's, uh, John Veach playing the ukulele with song books handed to each kid there. On the left is Angela from the library. On the right is Karen Paltola from the parks. This was in the rain, but we still had people there. Then we had a story hour at Mack Park and it was a teddy bear picnic. And the kids brought blankets and teddy bears and in all these story hours, there was a book read, there was an activity, whether it was a dance or a scavenger hunt, and then there was food and snacks provided. This one, they got Teddy Graham's little, uh, tangelos and those little hug drinks. So it was, they're well thought-out events and the kids, the grandparents, or the parents really seemed to appreciate these. Uh, another event that was added this year is the Nassau stargazing event. Two of them, which both were held at Fifth Avenue Beach. These were really well attended and you can see on the right, it was a stellar night. The sailboat is going by like we had orchestrated that. I mean, the people brought their chairs. The gal was a Nassau ambassador that Karen Mao found and, uh, she brought the telescope. You can see her in the first picture, the telescope is bigger than her. Everybody got an opportunity to look through the telescope. And then we had the bonfires going that are down at the beach and the kids had s'mores before they left and it, it was all local people. Everybody there I knew. And it was kind of a neat local function. It wasn't something, uh, provided for out-of-town people only or tourists. And some of these kids said, I've never had one of these before and it was a s'more. And I thought, that was cool. Okay, um, then a couple more of the stargazing event. You can just see it was a perfect night. Uh, one other event that we had, uh, this was the history of the Manistee Parks presented by Mark Fetter from our local museum. We had it in this council chambers in the winter. It was a perfect evening. He gave the whole history of the parks and it was fairly well-attended. The people that attended enjoyed it and we provided snacks afterwards, coffee and cookies. Here's some volunteer projects. The, uh, dome on the left is at Fifth Avenue Beach and Ed Tegler, another past chair of the Parks Commission, he is in the adoptive park program and has adopted this Fifth Avenue Beach Park and has, uh, this year volunteered with his family to, to paint some of the equipment there, which it needed and has boosted up quite a bit. On the right is John Veach edging, uh, the basketball at, the basketball court at the First Street Beach. Another one, this is a, a, a Veterans Park project. This was done by the volunteers at Manistee Park. This made such a huge difference and this was in the spring, the poppies were in bloom. I stopped down, I think, two days after the project was completed, and this one I experienced. I'm just taking some pictures and these two gentlemen came up to me from Brighton and they said, we come here every year and we just wanna say thank you. We're veterans and you are keeping up the memorial. And that makes it all worthwhile, when the, you know, you are doing it for the veterans. So I thought this was neat. And then we did use it ourselves for the story hour. Another project that we collaborated with Harbor Commission, Manistee Proud, DDA, and the Downtown Merchants all worked together on this. On the plaque, you see the people that donated the donations. Kelly Greavy got amounted to nine thousand dollars and then the DDA contributed eleven thousand dollars. If you did not attend the open house, uh, you missed a nice afternoon and you also missed the opportunity to see this, but it's worth your time to go down. This was a game changer and I don't know that of any nicer marina on Lake Michigan on either side. This is gorgeous and I visit a lot of marinas. This one is fabulous. This was the open house. There was, uh, refreshments provided. There was a couple prizes. One of them was a season pass at our boat ramp and another one was a Princess Cruise Ride. And then we provided snacks. Another one was the marina landscaping. The landscaping had become overgrown and, uh, protecting the view shed of the river was important, so a lot of the landscaping was replaced. Just a bench, a small detail, it's outside the women's bathrooms, which were painted in the upper part of the marina by the DPW over the winter. They're clean, they're fresh, they look great. The door is still quite hard to open, so with the older couples, usually the gentleman is sitting out here so he can kinda open the door still for his wife. But the bench is well-used there and it adds like a, looks like a front porch. Couple other improvements down at the same marina, the, uh, DPW laid the pavers. In the past, it had been kind of, uh, dirt that the boaters were sitting in with a table that was a little bit dilapidated. Now we have high, uh, what do you call them? Bar top tables that were bought locally. And we have two of those with lighted umbrellas over them and then there's another seating arrangement of two high tops that can see over the wall. And I think if you walk the Riverwalk during the summer, those were very much utilized by the boaters. Um, Gas Grill was donated by Ed Criskewitz, so that was just in the middle project, you'll see that the planners were donated. There's another picture of the open house. And also attending the open house were, um, our officers from the local Coast Guard, which was kind of a nice, that was a, a nice to see them there. We are continuing the memorial chair project. We had six, I believe it was, last year that lined, uh, facing, at First Street Beach, they were facing the water, Lake Michigan, and we were able to buy five more this year that face the channel. Those two are really, really used, people just sitting. You can see a close-up, there's a plaque on who, um, who they are in memory of. They are, uh, there again, they were bought locally. They are weatherproof and they should be pretty durable and they are taken in for the winter. Couple other things, attention to the details and I think, the details is what I think makes all the difference and I think people are realizing that. In the past, we've kinda had a, um, conglomeration of, uh, portageons and you might think, no big deal. Well, it looked like we kinda got the leftovers who, we had orange portageons down there next to the red Coast Guard station in the Red Lions Pavilion. This year, we got the basic gray and it looked, it's not a focal point, so it just blended away and looks good. One little improvement is like the signs in the middle, we could just cut the top off and that's something we could do. Uh, and the pole at the front is the pole that it prob, I don't know if it was a utility pole or a flag pole and now it's a bird perch. So just the little things. And I think we're learning that as a city and as a Parks Commission to look after the little things, pay attention to the little things. The big things usually are taken care of. This is another shot of a bench. All the benches were painted the previous summer, except for, I believe, two benches down on the Riverwalk and one trash can. They still need to be painted and that's something that we should get done, a volunteer of, but it just shows the difference of a little coat of paint or stain. Here's another, uh, one that we actually have collaborated with quite closely this year is the rec center at Sands Park. Sands Park is a park that we share jointly with, uh, maps, with the school. And so it's not ours completely, but, and then this, this is the youth center down there and you always wonder, well, who uses this and what goes on there? Well, Sheila Kaminsky, who is running the day-to-day operations, and Linda Chick, who's president of their board, on a very limited budget, do an amazing job down there. And I stopped down there right after the first week of school and here they have a big platter of cookies and a gallon of milk and cups out for the kids coming in. And the same kids, basically, that is their home after school. And you can see the one kid in the first picture lounging on the chair with a skateboard pillow, looking at his phone or whatever, and there's other kids playing a game. This, this is utilized and it is a safe haven and a home away from home and they call each kid by name that goes in there. And then on the right, the building is used in the winter for ice skating and winter activities. On the right is a much-needed building and my picture shrank it, 'cause it's actually much wider than that. And this was provided by, uh, Jim Grabowski on our council here. And he provided it for the Sands Park and it was placed in there by the DPW. It looks great. It's serving a great purpose and the girls love it because the floor is covered with skate mats in the winter. So this has been a good project, this, to work with them. They're an amazing center. And any of these, just stop by and see, see any of these parks and these projects. I think you'd be surprised. Morton's Park, Aaron can contest this, it's kinda been the nemesis of, I don't know how many years, but, um, it's like the never-ending. Now, there is a Mingur Grant and I think it's going to happen. It is scheduled to happen October thirtieth and thirty-first. It will, we're asking, um, if anybody wants to come help. There are some people from Game Time that we have paid to come up and the DPW is going to provide help. And the Parks Commission is going to be there, but we could use some volunteers on October thirtieth and thirty-first. The, we have high hopes for this. We have equipment ordered. We have, uh, we are going to lay a full-size basketball hoop. I, we're awaiting, I believe, the arrival of a skitter, but we need a full-size basketball court. Uh, Bill, our city manager, informed us today that there's a possibility that Morton's might provide a, potentially a, a parking lot with a, you know, many people collaborating on that. But there's hope for a parking lot, which is needed in every park. So right now, what we've got there though are two, two new trees and we have water access. But I would like to see the shade structure, the basketball court, I'd like to see these things. Hopefully, they will get implemented yet this fall. And we went with, to the tree commission, Karen Mao and myself, and the park borders Morton's Salt, it belongs to Morton's Salt, and they've given us a thirty-year lease with a ninety-day, um, if it has to be rescinded, for some reason, they have a ninety-day, uh, window that we would be allowed to take our stuff away from there. But they have been very generous. have been very generous. We are using the park. And it has this fence around it, but we would like to see grasses planted or trees so that it was covered and it wasn't quite so industrial-looking. So we went to the Tree Commission. I think we're going to work together. I think we will get trees. And one of the Tree Commissioners, Jerry Haw, has those huge tall grasses at his home and he has a whole row of them. And he said, hey, when I thin them in the spring, the Parks Commission, you are welcome to have half of them. So, or, when he divides them. So we're appreciative of that. Okay. And I thought, one of our things in, that we are stating is to maintain and preserve parks. And this, you know, the Hampton is here in nice addition, but we did lose some park space to that. This is the retention pond. And it's, you know, you can say it's no big deal, but I think we just, and then on the right is the school, which last night, these were, this picture was taken last night because I saw the kids playing. And it is still being utilized as a football practice field. We are going to lose that for a parking turnaround, parking spaces and a bus turnaround. So I thought, when our mission statement says we're supposed to preserve, I think we want to make sure we're not always going in the wrong direction on losing park space. Okay. The couple positives in the parks. This was provided, the life jackets on the left were provided. You approved the project. It was provided by the, the leadership training at the Chamber of Commerce. They were good addition on, I think they provided them on three or four spots around town. I, I saw them at both beaches. And then the press box was painted by the DPW at First Street and it had looked dilapidated. This was a big improvement. And just little things. And we got the tether ball. This was another, Erin can vouch for this, another ongoing project that it took a little while to get the balls up. And when we saw the usage on this, it's a pretty simple, cheap activity. They are used continuously, so we'd like to get more of those. And then there were the lights. And the lights is a bright spot in the city and something that the local people do seem to like. And then last one is this most recent one is the art drop in the park. The, these were two samples of the clues that were hidden and in the parks. And then this is the winner and her prize. And she was very appreciative. It's neat. So, that's all I have. And if there's any questions, I want to thank you for your support. The one thing I'd like to ask is two things, actually. One is, could we have a budget? When you're doing your budget for the events that we have in the parks. And it could be 3,000, whatever it is. It's not like we're going to overspend, but I think that the commissioners have donated and donated. I would like to see, the commissioners are the same if, if, if we didn't have to provide the activities. Part of the activities, our thing is free family fun in the parks. And we want to continue it free. And part of the fun for kids, anybody who's done kid activities knows, a big part of it is food for kids. So it's just snacks and it's food and it looks nice, but we would like to ask for, to be included in the budget. That it, and not the, not necessarily the volunteer one, but if we could be included in just having a Parks events budget. The other thing is, and I'm just throwing this out, we would like a liaison. I think the more communication back and forth with everybody, the better. If we could have someone who was interested in parks, that you don't have to come to every one of our meetings, but if someone tells you something that needs improvement in the parks that you related to us, or if we had something that we wanted to relate to you, that we had this, just a link, just a person, I don't know if you want to call it a liaison, but if one councilman or woman would be interested in that, we would appreciate that. I think that's it.
I, I have a couple of questions on your, your events for the summer. The stargazing and the storytime, is that going to be a yearly?
I think we'd like to. If they were successful, and I think so, I, we would like to see them. And it was interesting because at the stargazing, one of the men was from, what's that? Doesn't matter. We have some very interesting people that live in MASTY that have backgrounds in all of that. So yes, we would like to enlarge that.
And that's free forever?
It is free.
Okay. I, I think that's a great, great project because a lot of the kids that could, would go there wouldn't necessarily be able to afford that.
Exactly.
So, kind of answered my question on who paid for the, the food and stuff like that. So, and I think, I mean, if you asked around, I think a lot of people would want to sponsor something like that, especially, especially if it's, you know, for the kids. My other question is about the practice field. Where are they going to get moved to? I don't remember if that was a, I, I don't recall.
I don't know where all these practice fields, because even last night, they were playing football down on the baseball diamonds. Now, I'm not a baseball player, but I know Karen Peltole is. And, you know, they want them arched and we put this dust in them and that was part of the grant. And Jeff was telling the numbers, it was like $10,000 to, to restore, not even all that great, just to kind of, these baseball diamonds. And I thought, yeah, I wonder if these baseball players are fine with this football game going on out there. So I thought, I think that's something we got to look at as a community because the, the free, healthy outdoor activities are where it's at.
Okay. And then my other, my other question was about the garbage cans that we, that you replaced. What happened to the old ones?
Well, some of them are still out there.
Okay.
Yeah. They didn't all get replaced because of the cost. So we still have some out there and we still, so, as far as, I know, Jeff, you may know where the old ones.
The old ones are just simply 55-gallon drums that we painted black.
Okay.
And they get damaged, they rust out. So about every three years, we purchase probably 50 or 60 more of them. So as we have purchased the new, and we did two rounds of this. We did, we purchased garbage cans last year and then in the current budget, they both came this summer. So we just simply took those cans out of rotation and...
I'm, I'm just wondering if we had some that were sitting around that we weren't using?
We've got some excess at the DPW right now.
Like, I don't know, like Kasman School maybe be able to use some, like, some of the playgrounds if they...
Yeah. I, I think if council continues to support purchasing cans and we're trying to, we budgeted, I think, 20,000 each year. If we can continue to do that, and it's going to take three, four more years to be able to complete that. And if we have excess, then certainly we could look at donating those out. We also use them for special events when needed, the, the drums.
Okay. And then my last question about the cans is, like for Morton Park, you've got that big one there. Would it be something to have, so it's not just a plain black trash can, to have like the senior classes paint on the trash cans in the wintertime for, to put out in the springtime?
Morton's is getting a new trash can. That was part, or the Morton Park, they're getting new trash cans, new benches and a new picnic tables. But yes, that idea's not bad for some places. Yeah. No, what you just said would be fine. Morton's with the Minger Grant, we are getting, they're getting a new trash can.
Okay. I got one more question and then I'm done. Promise. So the porta potty at the Lions Pavilion. I know that we, when we did that Parks tour, we talked about putting a bathroom there. I seen in New Orleans, they had a, like it looked like a bathroom, but when you opened it up, it was actually a porta potty and they would drain. Is that something that we can look into? So it doesn't look like a, like it kind of looked like a shed? Oh, not like a shed, but it kind of looked like a permanent bathroom.
I know what you mean. And I have seen those. I've seen them at weddings and they're, they're expensive to rent, but actually they're very nice. And that would be a perfect spot to have a better bathroom. We are getting revenue generating there. And I always think of like, if you're a bride or a grandmother of a bride and you're dressed in your wedding gown and going into that porta john, that's not a good look. And I've seen class reunions and the class reunions, it's okay for the 10-year reunion, but you start going on a 60-year reunion, the porta johns are awkward. So yes, I would be all favor of temporarily getting, you know, those brought in, the nice ones.
That was it for my questions.
I just had two things. So I'll check my calendar, but if we wanted to volunteer, people wanted to volunteer for the build at Morton's, like constructing the stuff, who would they contact to?
Jeff or myself. And I think it starts at 9:00 AM, right Jeff?
Yes.
So 9:00 AM.
Both days.
Call ahead because, yes.
Okay.
I'll expand on that just a little bit.
Yeah.
So, we're doing a community build and it's going to be a two-day thing, just like Liz said, Monday and Tuesday, the 30th and 31st. The first day is going to be a lot of, my staff will be drilling all the holes, will be pouring concrete and setting all the posts and so forth that afternoon. But there'll be a lot of assembly of, of the equipment and pieces. So like day one is people, I mean, we'll take anybody and every, we won't turn anybody away. But it's a lot of hands-on and mechanical sorting the parts out, things like that. And we've hired Sinclair Recreation to kind of coach us through that. They helped us build the new Rocket Park down at First Street and we did a community build on that. It was, it was really fantastic. Day two will kind of be the final assembly of the equipment, putting stuff on, installing the borders for the fall protection and then installing the engineered wood, wood fiber. And we'll be doing it both at Morton and at...
Duffy.
Duffy. I seized up. At Duffy Park. So we'll be kind of going back and forth. We plan to have some refreshments and, and things. And, and there's no time commitment. If you can come for an hour, we would love that. If you can spend the whole day with us, we would love that. But, and we'll be getting out some more information on the city's social media outlets.
Okay.
How late in the day are you going? Kind of?
We haven't got into the, the fine details of it, but I believe we've got, we put in will calls for concrete at like 2 o'clock. So kind of that finishing thing will be my staff pouring the concrete and stuff. But it's really kind of work until people are retired or, or there's nobody there. Because we can start some of the mulch and some of those, those type of things. But, okay.
All right. The only other thing I had was, I would, I would agree with the mayor. I'd really like to see like the story hour and those things continue because I think it's been great for kids, especially kids that sometimes don't leave our county.
Right.
It's surprising, but there's a lot of kids.
Yes, there are. More than...
More than we'd realize that haven't been out of our county. They've never been out of our state. So I think those opportunities, especially when there's no cost, is really welcoming to everybody. So I would, I would personally like to see us really consider providing a budget for those type of items.
Thank you.
I'm appreciative that you guys have taken money out of your own pockets to do that, but I don't think it should have to come to that. So I think that's one-way counsel when we're looking at the budget next year.
Thank you.
Potentially have that discussion. And I just really think that your group has been kind of very cohesive and on the same page with a lot of things, which is nice. But you've also been really collaborative with other groups and that's just really nice to see from a resident and a council member standpoint.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Something's in the budget that we can provide some money for?
We'd have to, so the only issue I think is food, spending taxpayer funds on food. I'd have to check with the auditor about that. So I think event supplies, definitely. I think perishable items like food is something that typically...
Probably be putting in a request to you for that?
For supplies, for event supplies, yes.
Who else?
I just want to say thanks. I started jotting down some of the things you're doing. I ran out of room on my paper. So thank you guys for all the work that you're doing for our parks and our community.
Well, it's a good, it's amazing commission. So...
It's, it's really great to see. And I love the collaboration and keep going.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
See you October 30th and 31st.
Now we will have a discussion on tax incentives, Northern Hotel Oprah.
Good evening again. We have a slide presentation to, to kick this off. I've been asked to kick this off. I also want to point out that the developer and the owner of 141 Washington Northern Hotel is also with us. Kevin Schaefer is there now in the dark. And I can answer questions. So Kevin, I'm going to, well, go ahead and say hello.
Hey, hi everybody. Yeah, I'm sorry. My lighting is a little creepy here. I'm double duty today back home, but happy to be on the call with you guys and happy to answer any questions. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Kevin. So we'll start the presentation and then we'll have Kevin answer any questions after that, certainly. So we're here to talk about the Northern Hotel mixed-use project and their interest in Oprah, Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act abatement. Next slide, please Heather. So just a, a quick run-through of the property or the building. It's a historic building. It's covered under the Historic District Commission. It's also included in the downtown district. The city has repeatedly chosen this parcel as a redevelopment-ready site under the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program that helps us with access to, to assistance from the MEDC. It has been vacant and many of you know far better than I for many years, if not decades, and then underutilized. Molly, the city assessor, has deemed this back in 2021. We asked her to take a look, has deemed it as an obsolete building. And so it qualifies for this abatement, but it certainly meets all the criteria according to, to her review. In 2021, we, the chamber invited the DDA and city council to tour the building. You see pictures here from that tour. It is in a state of disrepair. You're seeing three pictures from the upstairs. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done to bring this back into a, a fitting use. It has been languishing as Kevin has been trying to work through all the options on a construction financing gap. It is, hasn't quite worked yet on paper, but with this particular abatement, it will help with, along with some other tools, we'll be able to help him move towards the project. The proposal is 15 long-term apartments to help address our, our housing needs and crisis. There will also be commercial spaces on the first floor. There will be, I believe, four or five ADA-accessible apartments on the backside of the building as allowed by the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. The Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act abatement follows a process. We have been following this process here. I'm the first point of contact, working with the developer. We asked the assessor to take a look and determine if it was obsolete. That's been done. We also have met with city staff, in this case, Bill, Ed and Heather, to go over the financials and show that there is indeed a financial need. Our next steps here is that a application will be received and then a, a district public hearing will be held here in city, city council chambers. And then you will deliberate on whether it will meet that, meet that need. You also will have the opportunity to approve a certificate for this property. Both of these actions can be held in the same meeting. Then the developer will submit, along with the certificate that you will approve, submits that to city clerk and then goes on to the Michigan Tax Commission for final approval. They will hear that and hopefully grant additional assistance. The purpose of the, of the program is to get to blighted, underutilized properties, either commercial, mixed-use housing. It will freeze taxes, property taxes up to 12 years. And this is something that many, many communities use and put into place in order to partner with developers to take care of those blighted or underutilized properties. Next slide, please. We want to point out that you've granted a few of these and they've been extremely successful. 440 River Street for Conos Manasty River was the first one that we're aware, I'm aware of, that took the, again, an RRC priority site and put it into use. Ted used that Oprah and has the 12-year term. I want to point out, and I don't know that we've said this publicly before, before you, before, but that property was a $1 million investment. And so everything that, that Ted needed to do to make it a up-to-code usable restaurant, every system in that building needed to be replaced. There was no option to turn on the lights and, and turn on a pizza oven. The electrical systems, the exhaust, the freezers, even the sewer was heading in the wrong direction, needed to be replaced. Everything needed to be done. But because of the partnership, he has taken this empty building and put it into good use for the community and for our visitors. Next.
I have, I have a question for you on that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
So when does the, the freezing of the taxes go into effect? Is it after all the improvements are made?
So, that is correct. So the...
I think that's an important point for everybody to understand. That's why I'm bringing it up.
That. No, that's, that is, that is indeed correct. So they'll get the certificate, make the improvements and then it should be frozen. Is that all right? Okay. Any, anything else? The second project is up on the screen. Tim and Lisa Morley, Young's Construction, took an empty restaurant on 8th Street and used an Oprah in order to put that into four apartments. There was an open house. This is a picture from the open house. I believe many of you were there to tour the, the property, but it, it created four wonderful apartments for, for residents and, and they were very quickly booked up because of the need for housing. So this is another great example of how this works and why we need to continue to use the tool. Next slide. On the use of the tool, just a very simplistic way of looking at it, and I apologize, I know that council member Beaton's probably seen me do this five times at least, but, but the, the abatement works like this. It will freeze the property tax value at the creation of the abatement. The incremental increase that would have happened because the property was improved will be captured for a couple of different uses. It can either go into the development to finance the, the gap, or it can also be used to make infrastructure improvements, like what was done in a different program at, at First Street Beach with parking and, and storm sewer, et cetera. It goes for the length of the, the term, which in the case of Oprah is up to 12 years. And then after that, the developer, the property owner will pay the full property value and, and pay taxes, which then comes back in to the city. The, the value here is it encourages people to redevelop these difficult properties that are sitting there vacant, often blighted, and puts them into a productive use and eventually increase the property tax base for the community to use and improving our community. But that's the simplest way to look at it. And many of the programs we encourage use this particular type of TIF or tax increment financing. That is it for the slides. A little final ones, just to thank you. Are there any further questions?
I have a question on the timeframe to complete it. Does he, is, do you, does he have a timeframe?
Yeah. So Kevin, the question is, I don't know if you heard that timeframe to get started and what your kind of next steps are. Is that Mayor...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, so yeah, that's a great question. If everything goes as planned from now, probably likely to get started in a perfect world early next year. And construction is about a year, 14 months to maybe get everything in service.
Is the parking going to be paved around the building, the parking spots?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. So with the Oprah, it says up to 12 years. Who decides what that time period is? Is that a council decision? Is that up to the tax commission?
It is the city council that makes that determination, working with, hopefully, the developer and all the parties to make sure that it will work. That's part of the reason why we make sure that the finances are presented to staff so that that can be factored into the decision.
It's part of their Oprah application, they put how many years they're asking for.
Right, but I guess what I, like in my mind, I was thinking like, I know it's up to 12 years, but if council or somebody made the recommendation that, and I'm not saying in this case, but in another case, like they only really need 10 years, we would want to make sure that we're getting tax revenue. So it's a win-win for both parties. Do you know what I mean? Okay.
I mean, you certainly do have, and Bill, if you want to.
Yeah, I'll just mention that, you know, with a project like this, they work out a pro forma, and a lot of these, they need all the, all the help they can get to renovate a building. But you're right, council would ultimately approve the length that they do have in their application, and then the financing, all the things working together, they typically are asking for the full 12 years for a project like this.
Well, and with this project, I would imagine that. But I guess I'm just saying, like with a lot of these things coming up, community members don't always understand that. So some, like, how did you come up with the 12 years? Do you know what I mean? Or how did you come up with the timeframe? So I think that's beneficial for, like, Councilmember Beaton mentioned, just everybody kind of understands that process or what that looks like.
So it will be based on finances. And Kevin, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a question, and you can answer it or not answer it because it's about finances. But would you like to inform city council about the size of your construction gap, your financing gap that you're trying to work through?
Yeah, absolutely. Construction costs, well, total cost of the project came in at about four and a half billion. Realistically, the project can't support more than about 1.65 million in debt. So that leaves a really significant gap where we've got to go for, we have an equity portion, obviously, and then we've got a senior debt portion. But there's a significant portion from MEDC that we're looking at as forgivable loans and grants. And we're maximizing everything that we can get in order to get the project across the finish line, and not only that, but to make it successful. And the Oprah is a big part of getting the numbers where we need them to be in order to be able to make sure all of our expenses are paid and that our debt's paid. So construction costs are high now, and debt's not cheap anymore. Just makes the project a little bit more difficult. That's why it's dragged on a little bit since we purchased the building and gone through a couple additions of rents. I think we're finally in a good spot, if we can all agree on a solid plan moving forward. I'm hopeful. I've got my fingers crossed that early next year, we're going to see some demolition taking place.
And to also add to that, Councilmember Pratt, the projections that we see and work with them, with Kevin and his team on, go out to 25 and 30 years. So they amortize all of that debt and all of the relief in order to see how it will, how it will balance out. And this one is really tight. It is really tight because of that gap. And it, it's, I'll put it this way, Kevin, you can, you can take issue with if you don't like my characterization, but the debt-revenue ratio is really slim, and it's all, just at the point where a bank would say yea or nay. So I mean, it's really, it's really tight. I'm sorry, Kevin, if that was too much, but that's where you're at.
No, no, that's absolutely true.
I just want to say that I would love to see something happening there. Right now, we're not getting anything out of it, are we?
No, and I think that's, it's been vacant for 20 years, been probably functionally obsolete for 40. So I think it's just us doing our part to make sure they have every advantage to do something there and then eventually add to the tax base. But, and I think too, the MEDC looks for council and the community support for these projects so that they can apply for other grants and get other funding, so.
Thank you for hanging with us and trying to get this going, Kevin.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate your time and consideration.
I've got one more question. I don't know who can answer this for me. Did we put a timeframe, like, on the Oprah's to, I can't remember because of what we had the issue with on 7th Street? I can't.
So I think that was a three-year where nothing was happening, and that was one, I think, where you see, like, because you don't really, you don't get a benefit till you improve the property where you're seeing that capture above the base value. And yeah, there was nothing being done there, and there were some other issues there with that. I believe it was a three-year. Do you recall, Ed?
Can't.
Was it three years with that Oprah on Simmons before we revoked the certificate?
Okay. I just, I'm all in favor for this. I just don't want to, because the margin is so slim, I don't want to have it dragged out five years because the plans keep changing. So I just was wondering if we had put a time. It was just for that certain building though, right?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question.
I just have one question.
Heather had one. I'm sorry, Heather had one.
We also haven't written in the resolution.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, it's in the resolution where the, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, have you done any other projects like this? Have you had a history with projects, or this is his first one?
No, Kevin has a history of doing historic preservation projects elsewhere. Kevin, did you hear the question about what your other, what's in your portfolio?
Sure, happy to answer that. I'll just give you my most recent few over the last decade. In Sheboygan, we did a project like this just, what is it, just this month, finished out and fully occupied. It was five apartments, a little bit smaller, two commercial units. And it ended up working out really well. Before that, went down in Mason, about the same size as that one in Sheboygan. Apartments on top, commercial on the bottom, just a building similar to this, ended up very well. Both projects are successful. And then other than that, it's multifamily apartment investing and hoping that Manistee can be the next one.
This comes to us for a vote. Could you include photographs of his other projects?
Say that again?
When it comes to us for a vote on the Oprah, could you include photographs of his other projects so we can look at what he's done?
I'll, we'll get that together for you so you can see the other projects. And it should be scheduled for the 17th, so.
It is.
Anybody else?
I was surprised when, I don't know, when we went through the, through the building when we had the tour. And it was quite a mess since I'd been in there the last time, whoever tore off everything. Kevin, what I was going to ask you was, do you have your own crew, or do you hire a crew to come in?
I do not have my own crew, so I don't run a construction company. Ryan Kinkade from Kinkade Building Group in Hazlet, they're, I've hired them as a general contractor for the project. They've got a significant footprint throughout the state, some projects of near Manistee, that are very willing and able to complete the project on time and hopefully on budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And I just mentioned, we wanted to have this conversation before it came to council on the 17th. I won't be here for the next study session, neither will Mr. Bradford, so we just wanted to make sure council had an opportunity. And if there's any questions, please submit them to myself and Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our building official start, Jerry Blue, on Monday, and also Teresa Waldo started. I'd like to invite Teresa up to introduce herself. Typically, they come to a council meeting. I didn't want to necessarily put her on the spot the first, or second day, but she said she wanted to be here, and she was happy to meet you all.
Well, thank you. So I'm Teresa Waldo. I'm the new city planner and zoning administrator. And yes, yesterday was my first day. Been hitting the ground running, busy. I'm enthusiastic, excited about being here. A little bit about my background. I got my master's degree from Aquinas College in Grand Rapids, masters in management. And then I also have my zoning administrator certificate from Michigan State University Extension Office, and also the citizen planner from there also. Just recently, I took the Level One Assessing MKAT for the state of Michigan. I did that for my previous job, which was at Lake County. I was the equalization director, or assistant equalization director at Lake County and working in the equalization department. Before that, I worked at Laketon Township, which is in Muskegon, roughly around 8,000 residents, and I was a zoning administrator there. Wonderful community. We had Lake Michigan, Muskegon Lake, and Bear Lake. We dealt with ego with all of the houses falling into Lake Michigan, just a lot of things going on, but a great township, great area. I'm originally from North Muskegon. That's where I grew up. And then now I live in White Cloud, and I'm married and got three kids. So that's a little bit about me, and thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Pratt.
I just had a couple things. So the one is about Sands Park. The fence around the park seems to be a little bit like in disrepair, and I'm not sure whose that is, but there's some broken parts at the top, like where the bars are disconnected and everything. And then there are some spots on the fence where, like, it looks like it's been zip-tied in areas, and then there's, like, where the metal clasp are broke. So I don't know if that's something we could look at. And it looks like it might need to be painted. I don't know if that's just something we could put out there and kind of plan for eventually, but again, I don't know whose that, whose responsibility that is. So I just wanted to bring that up. It looks like maybe some sidewalks are getting replaced. So are we anticipating, like, today I saw them up on 8th Street, are we anticipating that we're going to start that process of replacing sidewalks, or is it just the area?
Yeah, we've been doing this program for probably five, four, five years now. We started on the north side, and we had a company come in and do sidewalk cutting, where they kind of bevel the sidewalk and take away the trip hazards. So once they've moved through a section, then my staff is following behind them and doing trip hazards that are not eligible for that, that less expensive cutting. And then we're doing removal and replacements. So we have completed that work on the north side. We have completed from the Manistee River west of Maple Street, and now we're down, we're up around Jefferson School right now with the removal and replacements. And then, and then we'll start at River Street and go between Maple Street and 31 and head all the way through town and then get east of 31 in the next sweep.
So have you done, like, by Trinity?
Yes.
Okay, because I had somebody call me today about a location, like, between Trinity and, I think, on Lake Pine. But they were curious about their, so would they call the DPW if somehow they got missed on that? I wasn't sure. I saw them out on 8th Street, so I thought maybe they were just starting. So would they call the DPW? Would they call City Hall? Who should they call if they have a question about their sidewalk?
If they have a question, then call the DPW. Yeah, and I bring this up all the time, but the ordinance is conflicting with, with what? The practices that we are performing. The ordinance states that the property repairs are, are the adjoining property owners. The program that we're doing is with the Act 51 money, and we're doing kind of a sweep to get, try to get rid of all those trip hazards regardless of where they're at, and we're just trying to get the whole city cleaned up that way.
Jeff, did you get the letter from Diane Lund?
I don't think so.
She talks about tripping. I don't know where it was at, but she talks about tripping on the sidewalks. And she had a letter in the editor, too.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't, that didn't sound familiar to me.
So she had a letter about the tripping on the sidewalks and all that, so I thought I'd bring it to your attention.
And I just know, like, on the one, Brian, you know, the cross from Jefferson School, there's a gap like that big between the sidewalk. I mean, I've watched kids stumble, grandparents stumble when they're dropping off, because lots of times, as Councilmember Lundberg knows, I mean, drop off, people are parking on that side of the street.
Where's this at?
So you know where Jefferson is, that little ranch-style house right across the street? Like, there's the white one on the corner, and then there's a ranch, Brick Ranch.
Elm Street would be.
It's on Brian.
It's on Brian, okay.
It's on the corner of Brian Elm, and somebody has went around. I don't know if the property owner did it or DPW at one point in time, but they have spray painted it yellow. But nobody's looking down when they walk necessarily. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we've been through that area, but I'll take a look tomorrow morning.
Well, it's still there.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Then Bill, Jeff, when you go over, I talked to the manager about in front of Chicks on First Avenue, there's a drop in the sewer, a couple feet down. I mean, we paid all that money for that motorcycle accident. I don't want to see a higher fee be paid to somebody if they hit that way by chicks, 276 First Avenue.
276?
Yes. It's on the left side of the driveway, and it's quite a, quite a drop-off if somebody hits that. Now, are we changing those grills at First Street Beach?
Yeah.
Because that one is really rotten.
Yeah, there's one that we know that's rotten. We cleaned them all out last week, and then we identified some that are bad. I've got new ones at the garage, and so we just discussed that this morning about getting some of those replaced.
Okay. Bill, did we ever find out, I mean, we own that hill going up at Hospital Hill, Hill, Hill?
Yeah, it's a, it's a major street.
Did we look at that contract with Joel, Joe's last name?
Hollander.
Hollander. And that, I thought in the contract, when it was in the paper, that he agreed to do that hill.
He did, and I did mention it to him. I, yeah, it sounds, we'll have to have another conversation with him.
And we talked about that.
Yes, yeah. He didn't seem to want to do it this year, but we'll, we'll talk to him tomorrow.
He retired, and his son's running the company now.
I thought he put in a playground, the playground equipment and stuff at Reese Park instead of doing that road. I have some vague memory of that, and I may be confused on those facts, but I think that was also part of it.
He did both. He pledged money to build the playground at Reese Park when they did the apartment complex across the street. And then they went through some extension of incentives on the two properties, and he pledged money towards the reconstruction of the roadway adjacent to Horizon Point.
Horizon Point or?
Isn't that?
Or Reese Village?
No, Horizon Point.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think there were, I think council approved changes in both of them, but that was the pledge.
He was going to improve the street once he improved the apartments, right? And that hasn't happened, right?
He pledged money towards our project to improve those, and so we've got those under design. We've got the, it's actually an extension of Cajusco and then 14th Street, and then a section of Maywood that we have being designed right now.
Is there an update on the bridge?
Might as well just stay here, Jeff.
I was on vacation last week, so I didn't attend their progress meeting, but I did reach out to the onsite inspector yesterday. They did find some additional steel that has to be replaced. And, but fortunately, it's the same type of pieces and same type of assembly as the stuff they just designed, got approved, and ordered. So they're just ordering additional quantity. They expect to be doing half the deck pores within the next week, which they didn't think they would be able to do until after the steel was replaced. So as of right now, they have stayed on the delayed schedule with a mid, early November opening. I'll have a meeting, the next progress meeting is next Tuesday, but so far, even though it was like a five, six-week delay, they're still within that timeframe.
I know Washington Street is getting worse by the day with all that traffic. Try to do any kind of improvement?
Yeah, so we've anticipated that, and we knew that the detour would take a toll on that. We actually applied for some grants to do the work before the project, and now we've applied for some grants to do, after the MDOT project. Now we've applied for some grants to do the upgrades after that project. after the MDOT project. Now we've applied for some grants, um, to do the upgrades after that project, so, we're, we're, we're hearing positive things in our grant supplemental, but we haven't got official word on that yet. But we do anticipate, um, upgrading some water main on Wa- Washington Street and then replacing that pavement.
I have a question about the bridge. Um, when is the next, like, so we'll, when's the next closure anticipated to start on that?
Well, the good news is that the detour is supposed to be lifted the first week of, no, of this, I'm sorry, November. The bad news is that it will be put back on the first week of December.
So my question with that is, like-
Yes.
Right now, like, Maple Street, especially out here, is really congested, and the left, the left turn thing seems to be an issue for a lot of people. But I guess, like, today I kinda noticed it. You know, it's pretty clear, but, you know, you have those three lanes, 'cause you have the turn lane in the middle. When we go to, uh, close again, because it will be winter, do you think there's a way we could look at doing no parking on that Maple Hill, like, there by TJ's and that? Because when you've got cars there, and then you're anticipating bad weather, like ice and snow and stuff, I can really see that, that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, it's something we can, uh, I can discuss with the police chief and talk about with MDOT. We're getting into the winter stages of this, so I've already requested that, that their guidance and their assistance with expectations on snow removal on that detour route.
Yeah.
Because the level of service on US 31 is different than our major streets, is different than our local streets, so, um, so we're gonna have some meetings coming up to discuss the changes in the seasons and the next phase of the project.
They just know a lot of, like, the Ramsdale and Guest will park on that hill, but there's that parking lot just a little bit further up that they could park in, so maybe there's some way we can do an incentive for them to park there, so that-
Potentially.
All good? Mr. Pratt?
Mayor told me not to leave.
Yeah, that's a good-
Okay.
For Chief last, what's the status of that drug house up on Fifth Street? Are we, is that closed? I've, I've been told by the neighbors that the two brothers are still living there.
We have a, a litigation in Circuit Court on that. The city attorney could probably get a better update than I am. We have filed with Circuit Court on, uh, a suit to, to leave that house abandoned for a year. I don't know what the status of that litigation is.
Find out, 'cause I, I understand they're still living there and-
Yeah.
-covertly living there, which-
I don't think there's anything that precludes them to live there yet.
So, could you just verify and let me?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Speedy.
I have, um, a couple of things, uh, for the city manager. Is there any action at all on what's gonna happen with, uh, the old Memorial Hospital? And the second question is, has anybody reached out to the Olson family about the Save-A-Lot, um, area that they own? The, the building there, and they own all the parking lot and everything. I mean, that, those are two big areas that we really utilize better. Um, if we could get them, if we could get somebody to buy the property or the Olsons to maybe work with us and, and, uh, come up with something useful for that area.
Those are two very prominent parcels, and I know that, I think, um, Mark Miller has had some conversations with them about that. Do you wanna talk about that briefly?
Well, I, uh, I don't know if I can add too much more than that, other than I've had, uh, and, and the chamber has had conversations with developers about those two prop, uh, properties. Um, I have spoken, uh, to Brad Olson, the point person for the Olson Land Trust on that. We're, we're looking for, um, uh, either a lease or buy situation, and so that's, as much as I can say at this point, we're hoping to find somebody who will be interested in, uh, in developing the property.
When was the last time you, you, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but when was the last time you spoke to the Olsons about Brad Olson about it?
Probably about two months ago, and then, um, uh, we've, um, we've had conversations with, uh, a developer, uh, about three weeks ago. So we're, we're still trying to find some, um, some traction with that, with that project. On the old, uh, hospital, the, um, uh, the, the last conversation I had was about, um, about three weeks ago. And that one was to confirm that the developer I had been, uh, talking to about a potential YTEC, Low Income Housing, um, Tax Credit Program, uh, was pulling out of that and, uh, was no longer interested. So it's back on, um, as being an open, an open project for us, and we're trying to identify somebody who might be interested in that, um, in that project.
Does the city have a, what's the price on that property for the hospital?
It was, it's worth a million. Yeah, I thought it was almost two million.
And I think that's, that therein lies part of the challenge.
Mm-hmm.
Was anything going on in that building on Ninth Street, Ninth and Vine?
I wouldn't know that one.
Ninth and Vine.
Old Civic Club and-
Oh, by the same company?
I don't know if they had put that up. I think it's up for sale.
It is up for sale. I think there's a sign up there.
You have anything else for?
No, I just wanna, not, I mean, you drive by those all the time, and you wonder what's, what's happening. And I think I would like to know a little bit more about it each time you come up just to talk and see what can, what can we do to help facilitate something to develop there on either of those two pieces of property.
Yeah. Um, I think that it will take a partnership with the city.
I'm sure it will.
And, uh, it will really be dependent on what, um, what type of project it could be. There's a lot of options, and, you know, the first, um, the latest run at this would have, um, would have been interesting, but it fell through, um, you know, a few months ago. So, um, we had something on the line for a, a business expansion, but it didn't pan out. So, uh, we'd like to keep working on that one, and, and hopefully something positive will come out of that.
Good. Thank you.
I was just wondering about the, uh, Water Works building. We talked about it before on First Street. Is there any, what's, what's going on with that?
Um, I did meet with Mark. We're looking at an RFP to, for developers to take a look at it, so that's kind of our next. Figure that would just be to figure out interest of someone developing that, so that's gonna be the next step.
Okay. You have anything else? I don't have anything, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.